All right, folks, we're going to call this meeting to order. This is the Committee of the Whole meeting. It is Monday, October 22 at 7:00. Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmembers Ammons, Brown, Hazen, Jacobson, Miller, Roberts, Wu, Mayor Marlin.
Here.
All right, first up, we have approval of the minutes of our previous meeting on October 8, 2018. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Dennis.
Second.
Seconded by Eric. Is there any corrections or adjustments needed? All right, sign done. All those in favor approving the minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right, minutes are approved. We do have one addition to the agenda. We're going to call this Item 10B. It is a resolution approving and authorizing the extension of an electric system franchise agreement. Scott is going to go over that with Items 9 and 10 for us because they're all related. Are there any other additions to the agenda? Sign done. Oh, we, yes, we need to get a motion to add this item onto the agenda. Do I hear a motion to add said item?
I'll move that we add this 10B to the agenda.
Second.
Moved by Mary Allison, seconded by Eric. All those in favor of adding the item, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right, item is added. That will be 10B. All right, for public input, I have five cards. Three folks who want to talk about an item that, we'll just remind everyone, is not on the agenda. The council, or the committee, will not be discussing this item this evening, but we're happy to take comments from the public. First up, I have Lori Gold, who wants to talk about the 200 South Vine Street redevelopment. Good evening.
Thank you for having me. I am Lori Gold Patterson. I reside at 306 North Abbey in Urbana, and I just wanted to talk really briefly about, I know that the staff is soon going to be, if they haven't already, going to be recommending that the council consider entering into a redevelopment agreement with Green Street Realty for 200 Vine Street. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about, as you undertake this, that I know that the consideration will be one that has some controversy, and it may not be exactly what we're, what you would design if it was, if you had all the, you know, the control over it. But I really want to encourage you to consider that this land has been vacant for a very long time, and that I own a business called Pixo in downtown Urbana. We're 30 strong. We've been there. We actually just, this summer, celebrated our 20th anniversary in downtown Urbana. And so I've been in downtown Urbana, both, I grew up here, as well as running a business for a long time. And having viability, having businesses thrive, and having some density of people living in downtown and using downtown really matters. And so for me, as a business, my 30 employees, we take a lot of advantage of the restaurants, a lot of advantage of the coffee shops, in spending time in, you know, my employees really appreciate that they can go and do their grocery shopping. You know, this is a pretty amazing downtown, and I really want you all to consider the opportunity to bring, I think it's 40-something units, so maybe 80, 100 more people, to downtown, taking advantage of this. I want to tell you a really quick story, which is that a number of years ago, I had colleagues, friends and colleagues, who were sitting on the council at a time when there was a grocery store that, Aldi, that wanted to open by Behringer Commons. And I happened to live in Behringer Commons, and my, the neighbors in Behringer Commons were not happy about this. Aldi did not have a very quality reputation at the time, and they really felt like it was going to bring down the value of the property. And my colleagues on the City Council, I mean, they took a lot of, they really had to take a lot of scrutiny as they considered what was best for the city, what was best for economic development, what was best for residents. And they took all of the input from the residents of Behringer Commons, which, me included, was like, what's going to happen to my, to my property value? And they really listened to the things that were of concern to us. It was things like the lighting that was going to be at the store, and the noise, and the hours of operation, and the division between the neighborhood and the business. And the City Council came up with really achievable requirements that Aldi needed to rise up to, not what we've had at times, requirements on business that are not achievable, that stop business from growing here, but instead, really things that could benefit both the residents and economic growth. Things such as having a wall, things such as having hours of operations that would not go beyond 7:00 PM, or having the lighting not face the neighborhood. And they passed this, and now, years later, with, you know, Aldi being, I don't know, a third organic, is my favorite grocery store, and when I shop there, all of my neighbors from Behringer Commons are there. So I want you all to consider that this is not going to be an easy decision. There's going to be a lot of scrutiny, but just to really evaluate the pros and cons, and help the community set some criteria that will help the developer bring the very best that we can bring here, but to bring these residents to downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson. All right, next up, continuing on the topic, Norman Baxley.
I'm Norman Baxley. I live at 510 West Main in Urbana. I guess you could call me a stakeholder in downtown Urbana. My wife and I, Carolyn and I, first acquired property in 1987 in the 100 block of Main Street. Since that time, we've acquired more properties, to the point that we have 15 commercial tenants in downtown Urbana, and in the 100 block and the 200 block of West Main, including Pixo. We, I can speak for myself, I think that this development agreement is, on its face, it's just good planning, period. We need to, it fits with the downtown plan, it fits with recognized standards of planning. We need to bring more residences into the city core. We need higher-density housing in the city core. And that's basically what I want to tell you, that if you speak to the planners, this is a solid proposal. Now, what Lori was speaking to in terms of setting requirements for a developer, I think that's very doable. I read the letter of intent this afternoon between the city and the developer, and I was shocked to see that there's language in that letter that basically gives the city and, quote, "the public," basically review rights of the project. Now, I know how contentious projects that have to undergo a formal design review can be, but having, opening this up to public comment, I think could be a challenge. I would like to see that process unfold. I remember when the city, when the sculpture that was donated to the city, a huge sculpture by a renowned sculptor, was opened up to public comment and city, it was just turned into a horrible situation, and I would hate to see that happen with this development. But I do encourage you to look carefully at this, to impose some requirements in terms of quality. I hope that this development is not of the quality of many that we've seen recently constructed on and around campus, that this project could attract long-term residents, not necessarily students, and have the quality of finishes to be proud of. So.
Thank you, Mr. Baxley.
I'm sorry.
I said, thank you.
You're very welcome.
All right, and, Mr. Clerk, I think you have a card next to you, over there. And next up, Scott Dossett, same topic.
First of all, thank you for all that you do for our city, day by day. And a special thanks to the folks in Community Development, at least my friend John's over there. I know that sometimes it seems like you're pushing uphill when you try to talk about development, and so I really, you know, appreciate the job that people try to do to make Urbana viable and sustaining kind of community. And so I just have a couple of comments. Most of you received most of what I'm going to read in the mail from me a couple of days ago. And although I agree with what the prior two speakers have talked about, and certainly we've been hoping for a development at 200 South Line for years, I have some kind of essential questions to me about, you know, kind of the road that we're on now, and it has very much to do with the ideas of facade structure, presentation to the street, you know, kind of the vision of Urbana that we want to reflect in this new development. And so I would ask you, please, this has been vacant for a long time, so I don't see why we're in a hurry. The schedule that I read, I think it's on the fourth page, or, I'm sorry, the third page, no, it's on the second page, a four, four-proposed timing for the project seems to me to leave really very little time for consideration. And so I don't know whether to consider this proposal from Green Street Realty as a loss leader or a head feint, because aesthetically, this thing is just a nightmare as it's presented. It looks just like the very worst stuff that is packed into Campus Town. And so I hope that we can do, and that they will agree, to provide us with something that fits more into our neighborhood. And I'm a member of the Historic East of Urbana Neighborhood Association, and we're talking about five to seven blocks' worth of people living in that block. And so there are significant concerns, not only with aesthetics. I note that this plan, for example, didn't even show a rear elevation to Urbana Street. You really can't tell. Now, the planned view certainly has Urbana on that, but what is it going to look like in the neighborhood? That spools you into issues of noise and light control, adequacy of parking, storm and sanitary sewers, our neighborhood floods when we have heavy rains, some of it's not curbed and gutted, two blocks from the city building. So I think we've got incomplete information on the physical integration into the neighborhood. I think we can do better. There's no attempt in this design to integrate the federal courthouse or city building designs, or, in fact, any of the buildings in downtown Urbana. I mean, really, this first, these first pictures are shocking to somebody who went to Indianapolis with TWG and saw really quality buildings being presented to us. Don't like it. And, you know, kind of a brutal fact is that, you know, we, the citizens of Urbana, have a million and a half-dollar investment in this lot. I mean, if you calculate what the tax breaks, starting at 100%, tailing off to 20% over five years are, and the 400K you paid for the lot, and the demo, you get to about $105 million. And so we're going to sell it to someone for a dollar, and they're going to build something that looks like it, the design is, really doesn't fit into anything in downtown? Safety concerns, I probably have just about enough time for this. Just so you know, the crossing to Lincoln Square, and we have worked with the city, we called it the Green Street Corridor, and we bartered brick for concrete to make a conduit to downtown. It's the Wild West getting across Line Street at Green. No control whatsoever. Cars exiting onto Green, where response from UPD and fire are involved, is an accident waiting to happen. So please consider very carefully where, what the safety implications of this development are. So again, thank you very much, and I hope we can move forward with this and reach an agreement on a design that we all like. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dossett. All right, I have two more, three more cards, two folks who don't wish to address the council and one that does. Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood does not wish to address the council, but wishes to have entered into the record that they're continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems.
However, I do want to talk on that issue that consent decree, not consent decree, but number 13. Can I say that?
You didn't indicate on here, but I'll make a note. Consent Agenda Speak, I believe is, I see it now, now that you're saying it. And then, next up, Eldris Melinda Carr does not wish to address the council, but is, wishes to express her continuing concerns about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer issues, equity, and historic impact. All right, last, for public input, is Carol Spindell of Champagne County ACLU, who wishes to speak at the time of the agenda for repeal of aggressive panhandling ordinance, so we'll hold on to that one as well. All right. Next up, we have presentations listed. I don't think we have any.
Yes.
We do have, we do have one.
Yes.
Is that from Mike Brok?
No, Mikhail Lubansky.
Lubansky.
Okay.
Mr. Lubansky.
Mike Lubansky, welcome. Good evening.
Good evening. I have 10 minutes?
I believe so, yeah. 10 minutes. The clerk will clock in.
Cool. I'll go ahead and get started. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you about restorative justice. My name is Mikhail Lubansky. I've lived in Urbana for 14 years. I teach at the University in the Department of Psychology, and for the last 10 years, I've been doing restorative justice work in the community, in the community, and as part of that work, I have had the opportunity to travel across the country and even out of the country to talk about restorative justice. So it's my pleasure to do it in my hometown. I had a handout. What I want to do in these minutes is just briefly explain how I understand restorative justice, because the last polls show that about one-third of Americans have a working definition, and those that do probably have very different working definitions. So I thought I might just start by a few thoughts about what it is, and then talk a little bit about what it might look like. And then perhaps we'll engage a few questions. So restorative justice is an international movement that started in the 1970s, but that has its roots in indigenous practices on this continent and on most continents. So it has a very long history, but a very recent kind of incarnation, that started in Australia, in New Zealand, and a little bit in Brazil, and has gained some steam in different parts of Europe. And maybe in the last 10 years, has really made its way to the United States, both in the criminal justice system and in the, in the school systems. So I'd like to introduce the philosophy of restorative justice by basically saying that restorative justice is not a conflict avoidance or a conflict prevention system. To the contrary, it's a conflict engagement system. And the reasons that we want to engage conflict is because, even though many of us have learned that conflict is dangerous and messy, I'd like to suggest that it's not conflict that's dangerous and messy, but actually the suppression of that conflict. So if I didn't have this microphone and I started to walk away from you to increase the physical space between us, I'd have to eventually make my volume higher to compensate for that distance. And isn't it interesting that when we are engaged in a heated conversation and we find our organism getting upset or aroused, that we similarly find ourselves raising the volume, even though the physical distance between us hasn't changed? In the same way that we compensate for physical distance, we're compensating for the emotional distance that we feel between ourselves. And so it's in this context that I'm reminded of the words of Martin Luther King, who said, "riots are the language of the unheard." So that's my understanding, is that we turn up our volume, and we express ourselves with words, and in some cases, and I want to be clear that I'm not trying to make a blanket statement about violence here, but I've come to understand some forms of violence as a similar attempt to raise the volume by individuals, in some cases, individuals that identify with groups that have had not days, not years, but hundreds of years of experience of not feeling heard. So I see restorative justice as both, as both a way to respond to interpersonal conflicts where people feel unheard and misunderstood, but also to societal conflicts and the long histories of those conflicts. So that's the philosophy, to walk toward conflict with a goal of understanding. The goals of restorative justice, as the word implies, and of course, it's an aspirational term, the goal is to restore, the goal is to repair harm. So the justice system, I don't have a time, so I...
You've got, you've got 5 minutes, 45 seconds.
Thank you. So just as, so I want to contrast it with the conventional justice system that we're all familiar with, the criminal justice system and the school justice systems, and all the other justice systems that are modeled in the criminal justice system. And the criminal justice system asks what rule was broken, or what law was broken, who broke the law, and what's the appropriate punishment? The punishment must fit the crime. What's the appropriate punishment so that that person and so that other people know not to do that wrong thing again? Those are legitimate, valid, useful intentions. Restorative justice asks a different, a different set of questions. It asks instead, what harm was done, and how do we repair it? How do we make it right? And when I say harm in this way, certainly I mean the harm to individuals that are directly impacted, but as well, I mean the harm to the community in which the conflict took So we want to make things right, we want to repair harm, restore relationships, and we want to have an opportunity to understand what is happening in the community that created conditions for whatever conflict or whatever injustice has occurred. Because if we can understand the conditions that create those or contribute to conflict, then we have the opportunity to respond at the community level to the unmet needs, and not just provide psychotherapy, or education, or something on the individual level. How do we do this? Interpersonally, it's pretty easy. We create containers to hold dialogue, just as we have figured out how to create containers to hold the things that we like to drink and the food that we like to eat. Containers that hold conflict can be very simple. They can be an agreement about a time and a place that we're going to talk about something that's hard to talk about. So if I'm upset with my partner, instead of just kind of springing my upsetness and telling her all the things that I'm upset about, I might say, hey, there's something that I've been wanting to talk to you about, something important. You know, what do you think about talking after the kids go to sleep tonight? If it's with a colleague to similarly make an appointment. That's a container of sorts. It's a very weak container, but it's a container. And then there are ways to make that container stronger by inviting witnesses to the conversation, by inviting individuals who have some experience facilitating conflict to hold the space for us, by creating a system within a school, within an organization, within the city, in which one of the drop-down items on that drop-down menu for what do we do when conflict happens, is a restorative process in which we know that, we know what it will look like, and how will we talk to each other, so that we can do the two things that restorative justice is designed to do, to facilitate mutual understanding, and then to collaboratively decide how to go forward. Structurally, it's much harder, because restorative justice is not just an interpersonal process, it's a systemic process. So how do we, in a school, create an infrastructure, a system, for handling and responding to conflict restoratively? Because the schools have a punitive system, a discipline system, in the same way that the city and the country has a criminal justice system, right? So there is an alternative system. How do we create a restorative system that can stand next to, sometimes instead of, but often next to, the system that already exists? Because the goals of restorative justice and the goals of conventional justice, as I try to say, are not necessarily conflicting goals. They're not conflicting, they're different. And sometimes it makes sense to do both, and sometimes it makes sense to do just one or the other. So I think what I'd like to do is stop here and see if there is anything that you would like me to talk about for a minute or two.
Thank you, Mr. ... Can you say your last name again?
Lubansky.
Lubansky? Ms. Lubansky? Eric?
So I think it's really helpful sometimes to have concrete examples. In my reading, I'm by no means an expert on justice systems, but in my reading, I've encountered descriptions and assertions that Norway has an entire justice system that's largely based on restorative justice. Do I have the right idea there?
I'm not sure. I'm not familiar with Norway, but I'm a little more familiar with, excuse me, with New Zealand, which, in which the entire juvenile justice system is restorative, with a couple exceptions, but pretty much the entire system is.
The, and I guess then my second question, again, in the, in the interest of having something concrete to look at, examples to look at, are there any places, any systems in the United States that have moved significantly towards restorative justice that we could look at as case histories?
Sure. And when you say systems, are you thinking about a particular context, like the criminal justice system or the school systems?
It could be either school system, criminal just, or criminal justice system, or any of the kinds of systems we have where we exact retribution. I mean, we do it in corporations also.
That's right.
When people step outside the boundaries of the rules. So are there, in any of those areas, are there examples that we could look at within our nation?
Sure. Probably the early systemic adopters of restorative justice in this country was in Oakland. And so the Oakland Unified School District and the San Francisco School District, both 10 years ago mandated restorative justice as something that schools needed to do at the district level. Those are both very large districts, and by intention, there was no specification then, as there are no specifications still, about what that restorative justice in the schools should look like, and what that has meant in terms of, you know, how that was implemented. And what that has meant in terms of, you know, how that was implemented, is that schools were given the directive and then asked to figure it out. And different schools adopted different strategies and different ways of doing restorative justice. And so we have, in some ways, our incredible, you know, lots of fascinating experiments. And we're still, because we're really just 10 years in, we're still in the, at the point of, there's a lot we've learned and we're still at the point of sorting out what are the best practices. In Illinois, as I imagine some of you know, there's been, in some ways, a very similar mandate, although more recent, in the form of Senate Bill 100, that basically stipulates that schools need to document trying something else before they can go to suspension. And although restorative justice is not the only option that the schools were given, it is one of the many, one of several options, and it is increasingly the option that a lot of schools are turning to in order to be compliant with the bill. But again, the bill doesn't specify what it should look like, and one of the things that, you know, my intention was not to talk about the school district, but one of the things that is happening in Urbana is that the district has started to experiment and has been working with several different models to see how it can be done in a way that works for all of the stakeholders, the students, the staff, the administrators, the parents, because we may not all, we may not agree in the strategies for how to get there, but the needs are the same for all of these parties. We want everybody to be safe, we want everybody to have a good learning environment, and we want to get to the bottom of things, because we've learned, as we've learned in criminal justice, you know, the recidivism rate nationally and here at the Champaign County Juvenile Detention Center, the recidivism rate is about 68 percent. So, you know, it's about a 32 percent success rate. We aren't getting the outcomes that we want in the ways that we've been doing it, so we're trying to do it differently.
Yeah, okay. I really appreciate, I would say, you're bringing this to the community's attention, and I hope that you can get, and incidentally, in Norway, which only incarcerates about one-tenth as many people per capita as we do, the recidivism rate is still lower, it's 20 percent, as opposed to our two-thirds.
Aaron?
So, thank you for coming to present this information. Like, many systems that the people who are under them or in them are not comfortable or used to talking about an alternative. So I really appreciate you taking this on. How does something like this, are there models for a board or committee like this to use for restorative justice?
There are models, the model that I would suggest is a process model rather than a prescriptive model. So rather than, you know, sort of giving you a manual for how to do it, the model that I would recommend is a process for how to work it out for the board in question. And, you know, very briefly, it's a little deeper than that, but it's a, the three kind of primary steps are to say, "Hey, let's look at what's working for us in terms of how our body responds to conflict and rule violations and whatever concerns the board. What's working for us?" And the second question is, "What's not working?" And then the third, because we want to keep what's working and we want to build on that, and we want to identify what's not working, because that's where we might think about doing something differently. And then the third question is, "How would it ideally be?" And this process will lead you to something that's going to be some form of restorative justice, because the things that the group will identify, you know, I don't, again, I don't want to suggest it, but, you know, it'll be that everybody has a voice, that there's a due process, that everybody's needs matter, that we address not only the individuals, but the systemic context in which the thing happened. So this is restorative justice. And then what it exactly looks like, because the key is, we don't want to, you know, if somebody says, "Hey, here's what you should do," most of us are like, "Hey, no thanks, like, I'm good as I am." But if we're invited to create something for ourselves, and so one of the little phrases that you'll hear a lot in restorative justice communities, is that restorative justice is something that we don't do to people, but something that we do with people, with each other. So it's not something that I want to create for others, it's actually something that I want to create for myself and the communities that I'm part of, you know? And so it's meaningful to me to tell you that, yes, I do work in the schools and I've done work in the juvenile detention center and I travel and support groups in doing this, and this is something that we do in our family when we have the conflicts that all families have.
This last thing for me is, given all of the concerns that are raised recently with violence, gun violence, how is the restorative justice model being used with the community coalition? Walk is one of any of these entities that are trying to come together as a coalition to address some of the concerns? Are there any opportunities that you have with restorative justice to work directly with any of these individuals as part of, what was the-
Yeah, not that I'm aware of. I had hoped that restorative justice would be part of the fresh start-
Fair, yeah.
-but I don't know. If that was included, it wasn't included to my knowledge. So I, you know, I wish that that was there, and maybe in future durations, it will be. If I may, I'll say this, in yesterday's debate for the gubernatorial race in Florida, the Democratic candidate, whose name I can't remember at the moment-
Andrew Gillum.
Yeah, thank you. Closed his speech with a call for restorative, for more restorative justice. And I mention that here because I'm noticing that I present restorative justice differently than I did even a year or two ago. And the difference is that I used to make a case for something that, you know, we're not yet doing, that maybe we ought to start thinking about. And I think what I've noticed that I'm doing now is just acknowledging that restorative justice is here. It's part of our national society, it's part of our local community, and so it's no longer a question of, "Do we want to do it?", but a question of, "How do we want to do it in a way that's really going to work for us?" Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the committee? Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
All right. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council?
My presentation.
Thanks, God. All right. Next up, we do have a staff report from Mike Brunt, which he's going to talk to us about a major donation for tree planting in Urbana.
So I bring you good news, good green news, and that is, Dr. Holly Rosenkranz and Warren Levy has stepped up to the plate again and committed to donating $10,000 to this fall's tree planting. So that translates into 80 new trees, which is the majority of trees that we're planting this fall. Now, so that's phenomenal. What's more phenomenal is, this is their second donation. They combined efforts with the Urbana Rotary Club this spring and committed to matching dollar per dollar what the Rotary could raise for tree planting, up to $5,000. The Rotary maxed that amount, and we got $10,200 from that combined effort this spring. So all in all, we have achieved about twice as many trees in 2018, new trees that is, that we would have with our budget dollars. So I want to share the good news and certainly thank Holly and Warren for their efforts on this.
Let's give them a round of applause.
And do you want to say when the official recognition is, on Friday?
Yes, we're going to have an official recognition at two trees at the corner of Weber and East Washington. Friday is at 1:30, isn't it? I believe it's 1:30. So there are two of the trees that we planted this spring, they happen to be American smoke trees, which are fairly rare, one of my favorites, they're beautiful fall color, but they're good, a good couple of trees, and we're going to have Holly and Warren there to talk a little bit about their donation and discuss our fall tree planting.
And their donation has actually shaved over three years off the backlog in our tree planting process as well, which is significant.
Yes, so the loss of our urban forest, the decline that we've gone through, I estimated at our historical rate of planting, we had about a 12.7-year backlog when we began our efforts to reforest our community. We got a grant, those are hard and very competitive, and that shaved it down to about 10 years. But then Warren, Holly and Warren came in with the Rotary, that effort shaved it down to about 8.9 years, I believe. And now with their latest donation, we're down to 6.9 years. So that's 5.8 or 5-something years that we've got it down in a year's time. And Warren and Holly are responsible for basically reducing our planting backlog by about 3.3 years.
Wow.
All in one year, all in 2018.
Mr. Emmett?
So, I'm sorry. I just wanted to ask, well, first of all, that's exciting. As a gardener myself, of course, I love trees and all that, I like peace trees in particular. So this is a question, since I have you here, I'll just ask, because I have a constituent very near to me, as proximity, who's had three ash trees on their property. One in the backyard was so huge, it cost them, they got a deal for $5,500 to cut it down, right?
I understand.
And then the urban forester, a friend of mine, Dave Brayfield, helped cut down one in the front, but they still have yet another that's still an issue. The bark is falling off and it's dangerous at this particular point. So is there anything that we are working on right now to try to help some of the low-income people try to address this concern? They wanted me to ask you about it anyway, so I didn't expect to see you here tonight.
Sure. Well, in 2016 and '17, we had a program where we reached out to and used volunteers to find ash trees, all ash trees, healthy ash trees, infected ash trees on private property. And they defined those trees, whether they were treatable or not, we sent out letters to everybody, just because a lot of people didn't even realize that they had ash trees, and acknowledged, "You have an ash tree that's healthy enough to treat," or, "It's not healthy enough to treat, and you need to start thinking about removal." The trees that were healthy enough to treat, we offered a one-time program of treating those trees if they, citizens, were willing to pay for the chemical. So we went through that program, we had about 50-ish people that took us up on that program. And the idea behind the program is that treatment of an ash tree is about a third of the, excuse me, a tenth of the cost of removal. So if we can get people to acknowledge and understand they have an ash tree, help them treat it the first time, and then allow them time to either decide or save up money for removal, or treat it in another two years. We thought that was the best bang for what limited dollars we had to assist people in the ash dilemma. But that was a finite program, and we don't have that in existence anymore.
So currently, we don't have anything that we're... Okay. So when I think, one of the reasons why I asked the question as well, is when I thought about the gracious donation that came in, it's to plant more trees, and if, maybe I'm mistaken, but I thought, when we spoke before about the ash borer and its ability to migrate to other trees or to infect other healthy trees, other than the ash tree, is that correct?
Well, they don't think that's the case anymore. There was a fringe, white fringe tree that they found infected a couple, three years ago, maybe it's been more than that now, but they haven't seen that oddity again. So it doesn't seem to be the case, that the Emerald Ash Borer would move on to another tree besides the ash. So we're not exactly sure what's going to happen to the treated ash trees right now, that we could, what we're hoping is that the insect will reduce in numbers, because their food source is not as abundant, and that treatment then would be able to be spread out over maybe every four years or every eight years. So that's yet to be seen.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jacobson?
So what is the reason for the overall decline of our urban forests, the trees are dying younger than they used to?
I think that's a very good question. The big push right now in the decline is the Emerald Ash Borer.
Okay.
We lost, you know, over a stretch of about 15 years, we lost more than 700 trees, but just in the last five, we lost 500 ash trees.
Okay.
So that's the biggie. But there's a couple other components that we're starting to see higher decline in. One is that there's an oak problem going through the community. I'm seeing a lot of it in the Woonah area, and I've tested three trees now that have bacterial leaf scorch in our oaks, so that is a slow death. It's not treatable. You'll start to see, the oak trees will flash and have dead limbs, and it's about a 10-year, 15-year period before the tree dies. The other thing that I think we're seeing is the age of our urban forest. Our urban forest is mature, so we had a lot of trees planted after the Dutch elm disease, Mike wiped out the American elms, and they're all plateauing at about that age. And so we are seeing decline, I think, just because of the maturity of urban forest. So that combination of those three things has hit us hard here, and the Emerald Ash Borer kind of took us down the peat patch in such a way that it increased our decline, our mortality, over what we were able to keep up with replacement.
Are there tree pathogens that are normally farther south and that are moving north with the climate change that might affect us?
There's a number of insects that are coming our way from the East Coast, from all directions, actually, that we should be concerned about. But that's always kind of been the case with materials being imported into the country that bring a lot of these exotic bugs and plants into the area. And really, the trick with trees, as our first arborist, Bruno Shield, has taught us, is diversity. So we're really trying to keep up the diversity, we're trying to get back to planting more native trees, but we're really trying to mix it up, so if something does come in like the Emerald Ash Borer, and we were better prepared than most, because we had lower numbers of ash trees than a lot of communities. But that's the way we're defending ourselves, is diversity.
Dennis?
Could you repeat the time of the dedication?
1:30.
It's Friday.
Yeah, northwest corner of East Washington and Weber on Friday, the 26th.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from the committee? Thank you, Mike. All right, I guess first up, we have ordinance number 2018-10-070, an ordinance approving a right-of-way license agreement with the Urbana Park District. This is about a 10-foot-wide shared-use path that's supposed to be going from north of West Park Street between West Church Street and North Broadway Avenue.
We had one more staff report.
Do we have one more? Mr. Bill Gray.
Thank you. Yeah, this is a staff report, but this will be my last staff report. And 26 or so years ago, I calculated, if you want to add committee meetings and council meetings, I've been to over 1,000 of these meetings. So I have a little experience as to what happens. But really, I just wanted to share with you all the pleasure of serving the mayor and council here, and your support to myself and the Public Works Department, and the many things that we've accomplished. And I just want to thank you for that and for that support. It's been, again, a pleasure to serve the city for these many years, and I will be seeing you on Monday nights, but from a remote area most of the time, but I'll still be in the community. But I just want to thank you for allowing me to serve, and it's been a real pleasure. So I will pass the gavel on to my staff here, and Craig and others, and look forward to a new director in the future, and we'll be in the community to, if need be, share some past history or knowledge if that's needed. So, anyway, I just wanted to thank you for your support to me and the department, so.
Mayor?
Bill will be irreplaceable. There are just no words to describe what 26 years of devotion to this city has brought the city of Urbana, and you've left your mark on every square inch of it. We'll be celebrating Bill's 26 years of service to the city on Friday at 4 o'clock at the Civic Center, so I hope you can join us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Bill.
Boy, did I just feel some extra weight come my way.
Did it just get more real for you, Craig?
Yeah, it just did. Good evening. I'm Craig Schunkriler, Assistant City Engineer, and I have Andy Russo with the Urbana Park District here. Tonight, we are talking about a shared use path along Crystal Lake Park. It'd be the south side of the park on North Park Street from west of Church over to Broadway. The multi-use path is proposed by the Park District to be mainly within the Crystal Lake Park itself, but portions of it and its paths will be within the city right-of-way. The proposed installation of the path is at no cost to the city. The installation is being, the cost is being funded by, the Park District was able to get a grant from IDOT for an Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program Fund grant with local match coming from Carl Hospital. The maintenance of this path, including those portions within the city right-of-way, will be the sole responsibility of the Urbana Park District. It is accordance with city policy that a license agreement for use within the public right-of-way is attached for council consideration. I'm going to turn it over to Andy here, and he can ask or answer any particular questions you have about timing of this project. But I think this is a bit of good news as well in Urbana.
Yeah, well, I'll just kind of discuss real quick the scope of the project. Like Craig said, it was a grant that funded engineering through construction for that southern border of Crystal Lake Park. It also provided for some preliminary engineering along Broadway that would run north-south, a 10-foot wide multi-use path to be completed in the future if we were to receive another ITUP grant. And that includes a pedestrian bridge over the Saline Creek, and then would complete that connection to the 10-foot wide multi-use path along Broadway on Crystal Lake Park that goes up towards the entrance of the Pool and Nature Center. And you can see as the design, it's very similar to the path that was constructed along Broadway a couple of years ago, where it kind of meanders in and out of the park to give the user a little more recreational park experience.
Great. Is there any questions from the committee? All right, if not, do I see a motion? Mary Alice?
I had a question.
Oh, you do have a, all right. I guess there are questions. Mary Alice?
So I was curious, the term and termination of this right-of-way license agreement is 99 years. And I remember, I recall, when we had rented the space for the sign up there on Cunningham, it was also 99 years. So I'm wondering, is this standard policy that we rent things for 99 years? It just seems like a really long time.
It is, I'm looking at our city attorney, but it is my understanding that, yeah, that's a typical term. Is that correct, Jim?
Separate from a conveyance, it's, you know, well within the norm now. The one you're talking about with, you know, where we terminated the lease in favor of the Cunningham Children's Home. Frankly, that's the only other 99 years that I'm, lease that I'm familiar with. But generally and conceptually, 99 years leases are very normal, unless you want to convey something.
I think the British also rented Hong Kong for 99 years, if I remember correctly.
Yes, and I think they gave it up sooner than later.
1999, I believe, is when it turned over. Okay, it just seems like we're talking, you know, over a lifetime here. Not over terms, we're talking over a lifetime. It just seems a bit odd, but.
Any other questions from the committee? All right. Is there a motion?
Yeah. I make a motion that we adopt or send ordinance 2018-10-070, an ordinance approving a right-of-way license agreement with the Urbana Park District concerning the north of West Park Street between West Church Street and North Broadway Avenue, to the committee with approval.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, those moved by Dennis, seconded by Bill. Are there any other discussion amongst committee? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? All right, that will go forward to committee with recommendation for approval. All right, we got another one from Public Works. An ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23-172 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code, establishing current loading zones on certain streets. This is concerning 801 East Florida Avenue, and this is ordinance number 2018-10-071. Craig.
What you have here before you today is a recommendation from the Traffic Commission to approve a 15-minute loading zone, Monday through Friday, from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Florida Avenue just west of Wiley Drive. It's a space that will allow two vehicles to unload and discharge children to an at-home daycare facility. Any questions?
Are there any questions from the committee? Dennis.
Yeah, I know that we do create special parking zones on streets for loading and loading commercial goods and everything. Is this a border on, like, spot zoning, or, you know, is this a special privilege that, or is this a common practice that we would allow any nursery school in a private home?
I think each one of these would be a case-by-case basis. I think the alternatives here are that when we look at it from a safety aspect, would be the unloading might be occurring on Florida itself, and if we can get those vehicles off of that major road, and, you know, can pull into two spots. We also look at the density of the parking that's occurring within the roadway itself. Most of the cars are parked west of Wiley Drive, and those seem to be used by school district employees. To the east there, there's not very much density. So when we look at, can we do something that provides better, basically, safe ass, alighting, boarding and alighting to, for children for this unique situation? That was kind of what the Traffic Commission felt. So it's a case-by-case basis, I would say.
Good, Dennis. Mary Alice.
So I have two questions. The first one is, is there parking allowed currently in this location, or is this no parking?
There is only on the south side of the road, though. There is, the north side, parking was removed several years ago for the installation of the bike lanes. There is a bike lane on the south side as well, but there's additional space in the diagram that's in your packet. You'll see cars parked there.
Right, right. And that's why I was wondering, are we taking parking away from those street spots?
Well...
By turning it into a loading zone?
Again, those, there's space further to the east there that is relatively unused.
Okay, let me, well, there is a reason why I was asking that. So this is a home business, in, physically in a home, so it's a home business who's physically in a home. There's no time limit on this. Is that common? Is it possible to put a time limit on it? I mean, people move, people change professions and so forth. It seems like we wouldn't want to keep, the only reason we have this loading is for this particular business.
Right. I don't recall us putting time limits in our schedule, traffic schedules. But what we do at that point, we will revisit things from time to time. So if in the event that, say, this daycare business ceased operation, likely what will happen is that others will come to us, that's usually the way that it works, others that are wanting to use that space, will come to the city staff and then ask at that point. What we could do, though, is ask the current owner to notify us. But we don't have anything in our schedules that give a specific, like, time limit or an expiration period within our schedules. Otherwise, I guess we could, but then we're going to have to bring it back to council every time that it comes to expire.
I think it would be nice to ask the people who live there if there's a change in their business, or if they move, to notify the city, and then, I mean, we need to revisit this because there's no reason then to have a loading zone, right?
Right. And we've, we try to, I mean, sometimes though, people forget, or they move away.
Sure, sure.
You know, things like that. We can certainly ask those folks. There are, the daycare business, there are two representatives here, if you do want to ask questions of them in the audience, and they can come up. Otherwise, I think we can ask them. I don't know if we would put something in our official ordinance, though, is what I'm saying. Is that what you're asking, ma'am?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we can put something in there that just asks for a review, if it's still needed after five years or what have you. I just know that, you know, that there was some restricted parking here on High Street in Urbana and so forth, and people were concerned about the courthouse. And then that was there for a long time, and then they finally removed it because nobody from the courthouse was actually parking there.
Right.
Right? So it would just seem, especially since this is a small, well, actually, I don't know how small it is, but a business and a home.
Right.
That it would make sense to put it, at least a review date, not necessarily an expiration date.
Okay. Well, we could certainly do that, I think.
Mr. Jacobson.
Yeah, so I was, you know, attended the hearing, participated in the hearing as the council representative on Traffic Commission, and I just want to emphasize something that really was impressed, really was emphasized at the hearing, and that is the safety. Because a lot of the, a lot of these kids are toddlers, and you're navigating, and the shortest distance that a parent can navigate a toddler to, you know, the safe haven of this facility, the better. So I was very impressed with the, with the need for reserving these parking spaces, so that that distance to be traveled was very short, and didn't involve, you know, crossing any danger points, even driveways, or let alone sometimes across the street. So it was, I thought this was an important thing to grant.
Bill.
Yeah, I assume this isn't a new business, and they've been, they've been trying to get by with the way it is now for a while. So the alternative is to pull up and find the next available space, or to pull in the driveway. It seems like pulling in the driveway would be more dangerous, because then you end up backing out, and you could hit something.
Right.
So is that pretty much the way that, has been happening, is they've been pulling up or pulling in the driveway?
I'm Monique Brownfield. So that's a one-car driveway. If you pull into there, you're blocking the sidewalk. So there's, technically, you can't park there. It would be illegal for you to park there. There's nowhere else, just because the teachers park there, because it's easier for them to go into the school. They, with them putting the bikes on there, it just made it really difficult for any parents to park. And then we've communicated with the school district, and they just aren't, they just aren't listening. They've gone through, you know, three principals in the last couple of years, so I think it's kind of hard to communicate with them. It's just, it is, it's, pretty much, it's a safety issue for all the children. There's actually a mom who has three kids, who has, she has two twins, and, you know, a toddler under two, who she has to come in, and it's hard whenever it snows or rains for her to get them in by herself, whenever she has to park three houses down, because there's nowhere else for her to park. And I agree, can I keep talking? Sorry.
Please.
Sorry, I like, I talk a lot. I agree with you with the, I have no issue with the five years, too. I think that's a reasonable thing to do. I don't, I think that if you just left it there, it would be an issue. What if they did move? What if the business did close? What if they, you know, we just forget, oh, we have to call the city. I mean, what if we have other things going on? I agree with the five-year mark. I think that's a good timeline to, you know, check it out, make sure the business is still there, make sure they still live there, you know, things like that. I think that's very reasonable to do.
Okay. Thank you. No, no, thank you.
Mr. Ammons? Oh, Bill's still going.
The only thing I would emphasize to kind of keep on top of the parents, to make sure that if they're bringing kids both to school and to your daycare, that they don't let people just run across the street there to go to the school.
There is no kids that go to the school that attend the daycare.
Yeah, but they may have two different age kids and try to drop them off at the same time, or something like that. And then, just because it is near a bike lane, I have to be sure to get in that, there's a new law in Illinois that when you're opening the door by a bike lane, you're supposed to use your right hand to turn around, to make sure there's nobody, you know, or I guess, whenever you get out of the car, you're supposed to use your right hand to open the door, so you can see if there's either a bike or a car coming from behind. So it might be a good educational opportunity to, you know, remind your parents of that, too.
Okay.
Thanks.
Mr. Ammons.
So I just wanted to make sure about the space. It's just the red that we're talking about, and that's two-car spaces?
Yes.
And as far as the number, I know when we talk about crisis nursery over here, the volume of the number of people dropping off children and things like that, that a couple spaces is not enough, but you're okay?
That is enough, yes, because just with the times that they come, it's about the same every day, and they come at different times. There's, normally, there's no more than two cars there at one time. There's, they come at different times, between, any time between 7:30 and 8:30 is normally whenever they drop off. And so just, it really varies, and I think that's an adequate amount of space for the cars.
Okay, thank you.
Bill.
Sorry, I just have to correct myself, because I said it was a new law. It's not actually a new law. Some people wish it was a law, but it's a suggestion, and it's being promoted in the booklet that the Secretary of State uses. They ask people to, they call it Dutch Reach, they ask people to use it. And I think especially in this circumstance, when you're going to have a lot of traffic stopping there in the morning, and people getting out on this, to get out on the left side by the bike lanes, it wouldn't hurt to remind people to do that.
That's fine. And I think, yeah, I think that's a good thing to bring up, too. And I think that most of them are cautious anyway, because the road is so busy, you kind of never know what's coming at you, especially, even if it is in a school zone, and they're only supposed to be going 20. You still kind of are cautious, and you watch out, especially, even whenever you have to get your kids out of the car.
Mr. Ammons.
So Craig, is the little space next to the driveway, is that actually big enough for a car to park? I know sometimes we have these little slithers of curb and grass that are not quite big enough for a car. It is big enough for?
Yes, yes. Do you want to, I have an image I could show council.
I trust if you say it is. I just wanted to make sure, because it seemed like there would have been a perfect spot for.
Yeah, there's enough, there's enough space there for, in totality, four to five cars between the two driveways. We're talking about two-car length. And mainly, it's entirely in front of the residents of the daycare, that's important to note. We also notified all of the adjacent properties, including across the street, and we did not get any feedback, you know, of concern with this loading zone.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are there any other questions from the committee? All right, is there a motion from a committee member?
Will we move this to council with a recommendation for approval?
I'll second.
Are we, are we going to add language? Do you want us to add, like, five years, as that was?
Just a review, yeah.
Okay. And put that in the ordinance, then?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So I will amend my motion that we move this forward with recommendation for approval with the amended language recommended by Councilmember Wu. Older person Wu. There's no second.
Do you still have a second?
I still have a second, yes, I do.
On that?
Person Wu.
Is there any other, is there any discussion from the committee? All right, all those in favor of the amended motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Scott, I think you're up. We have three resolutions, and one of which is not listed on the agenda, but is 10B. The other two are 9 and 10. Resolution number 2018-10-049R, a resolution approving a retail electricity supply agreement for DS5 accounts. The other one is similar, number 2018-10-050R, a resolution approving a retail electricity supply agreement for DS2 accounts. And finally, 10B, not on the agenda but was moved and added, a resolution approving and authorizing the extension of an electric system franchise agreement. Mr. Scott Tess.
Good evening. I'm going to discuss all three of these kind of in one fell swoop, because they're all very related to each other. The first one is the extension of the Ameren Electric franchise. So we... So we've had a franchise agreement with Ameren for some number of years. It gives them rights to access our right-of-way to maintain the electric system. That agreement is expiring in January. Ameren, because they do many, well, they do these agreements with every community in their service territory, is very interested in expediting all of these agreements as they expire with their communities. And so is giving us some special consideration for extending this agreement ahead of time. So the agreement is 30 years in term. Obviously, it allows Ameren to continue to work and maintain an electric utility system. It adds some language which we put in our updated franchise agreement with Ameren for gas and language whereby any future planned facilities that they may be considering, they're going to give us some advance notice. This is really helpful so that they don't go and do a bunch of planning and, and then pull a permit for some facility that might then be in the way of some facility that the city of Urbana or a private developer might have in mind. So it's just some cordial pre-planning. It also, in our negotiations, we're also going to be signing a subsidiary or separate agreement, a memorandum of understanding that's in the documents before you, whereby any, any work they do in the right-of-way for existing facilities, they're going to go ahead and notify us using our existing online permitting system. That's not something they've done before. It's not something they put in any of their franchise agreements with other communities. But they're willing to, since we have this nice online system, they're willing to use that for their existing systems. Any new installations, new facilities they build, they will pull a permit and go through the normal process. Ameren will also pay a franchise fee, and the fee schedule is in the document. And out of consideration for the city moving quickly and extending this franchise agreement, they're going to forego their normal five-year ramp-up for the, for the full value of the franchise fee and instead accelerate it into just three years, which provides more, more money to the city sooner. And then also in the course of, of our discussions with Ameren, we raised the issue that we believed we had some, missed, some errors in billing and had been overbilled on some accounts. And so again, separately, and the document is in front of you, Ameren is, is going to be resolving those mistaken billings. And there's a document that, there's a letter for, whereby Ameren is expressing such. There's also a document that describes what our first claim was, what we believe was misbuild, and then Ameren coming back and editing that. So that's all in your packet there. What we lose in this new franchise agreement, or what is different really, is before the consideration we received from Ameren was discounted street lighting. So Ameren is phasing out discounted street lighting as, as their consideration for using the right-of-way. Instead, they're just providing cash as a, as a franchise fee. And so the, the difference there is also on the second page of the memo. So you can see that we are money ahead by using this new formula. Since we are no longer receiving discounted street lighting from Ameren, we, we're, we're going to be, you know, put on the normal full tariff for street lighting with Ameren, except that we're going to follow up this franchise agreement with the next two resolutions that are in the agenda. They are for retail electric supply. So instead of taking the regulated Ameren tariff, our broker, our municipal electric aggregation broker, it, it has brokered our electric demand and gotten a more competitive rate on the market. There are two agreements there because there's, in the technical ways that Ameren assigns rate tariffs, typologies to accounts, there's two different types of accounts. One of them is, is referred to as small commercial electrical, electrical account. The other one is more traditionally a streetlight tariff. So they get two different prices, but we're going to, you know, execute both of those at the same time. And so that's also in the documents in front of you. There's two items that I want to raise that are going to be different when we come back for the city council meeting with the electric supply agreements. First is, I believe it's number eight in the agreement. Let me double-check. Yes. Number eight, material change. What that says is, you know, they're providing, the vendor is providing an electricity rate, expecting a certain volume of sales to the city. And so it restricts us from substantially changing our volume or our, our electric demand to 10%. Since we are always replacing older type of streetlights with LEDs, we didn't want to be too hemmed in in our ability to reduce our electric demand. So our broker was able to negotiate expanding that to 30%. That's not typical, but we were able to get that done. The other thing that's going to change is this agreement, the one that I put before you, calls for starting the agreement with the November meter read. Because the next council meeting will be in November, that's going to get changed to the December meter read. So we're just delaying a month so that the timing is appropriate for the vendor. Because it's two weeks away and electricity, retail electricity is a, a market that fluctuates daily, it's possible there could be some minor changes in the, in the price available between now and then. But our broker thinks that it's essentially going to be the same. There's not going to be much fluctuation. Any questions?
Mr. Brown?
So the franchise fee, is that, how's that calculated? I mean, it looks like it will be frozen for years three through 30. Is that right?
Say again, it looks like it?
It'll be frozen?
Correct.
Is that, what's that meant to cover and how's that calculated? Is that something we just negotiate?
Is it? They, Ameren uses a formula that they use with all their communities. The franchise agreements are very, very boilerplate and as is their methodology. And in the document titled Ameren Illinois Company Electric Franchise Agreement Exhibit A, that's what they provide as their methodology for setting these rates.
Okay, yeah, I think we just got that, so I haven't really had a chance to look through it. But is that supposed to be, is that supposed to cover our inconvenience of kind of regulating or, you know, our public works when they have to go out because of a down wire or we have to do some kind of right-of-way stuff? Is that kind of what the franchise fee is meant to cover?
Yeah, I think that's, that's a fair statement. I don't think that they do a study to, you know, determine what are inconvenience costs in dollars. You know, they, they're compensating on, you know, the size of the customer, the number of population. And the, the agreement allows for the franchise fee to increase if population increases. And then there's a tier factor and average cost per customer, so it's a mixture of factors.
Okay. And is it, I mean, I'm a little surprised there's no inflation adjustment basically because our costs go up. Is this regulated by state statute, what they can charge, or is it just something they've?
I don't think state statute regulates. I haven't seen any state statute in, in renegotiating this. They do strongly encourage consistent franchise agreements across all their communities because they have a lot of them.
Okay.
For them, it's a management issue.
Who else?
So I'm assuming that the franchise fee goes into the general fund?
Correct.
Okay. And what, what are we getting paid now for a franchise fee?
So we don't get a franchise fee, but we get discounted street lighting, which is worth about $122,000 a year.
Okay, so that was my next question. If you could walk us through a little bit of these numbers. So we don't get a franchise, so they're going to be paying us, what, $170,000 more years three through 30? I might not have done that right.
So years three through 30?
$200,000 more.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So there'll be $200,000, $200,000 more. And then if we look at the other one, what is the total estimate of what we're going to be spending?
Yeah, if you look under, on the memo regarding Ameren Illinois Electric Franchise Agreement, on the second page in the, under the financial impact section.
Yes.
Year zero is like our base case, right? And then year one, two, three represents that the franchise fee increases. So right now, we're, you know, they're, they're essentially providing $122,000 in benefit through discounts. In year one, that goes away. We have an estimated streetlight electric supply of 222,000 with an Ameren franchise fee that year of 198,000.
So that costs the city 23,000, so that's the negative on our, what we would have been.
Right.
Okay.
And then it goes positive in year two.
So it evens out in year two, so we're ahead by $15,000 in year two, right? And then, and then 100,000 in year three. Okay, and so the, the retail, this amount on this financial impact is equal to the amount that we're seeing in the other document on how much, right?
These estimates in this memo, I think, were based on an expected price of 3.6 cents, and I think we're at about 3.5 for the, for what we are quoted from Calpine Energy. So yes, it's, it's very close.
I'm just trying to put all the pieces of paper together.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
With the numbers. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Scott, I had one question. The supply cost estimated stays pretty much the same throughout, but probably not realistic that we can expect that it stays the same?
So we're going to sign three-year agreements for the electricity supply. And so within the three years, the, that, that price will be flat. Now, cost of electricity over time, yeah, escalates 3%, 4% a year. So our next supply agreement presumably would be a little bit more expensive.
But the franchise fee will not change?
Correct.
So we'll get a little less as time goes on?
Correct. And hopefully we'll keep installing LED streetlights as we go, as we replace, and yeah.
Go down. And, but we do have the option to, after five years of initiating the resolution, submit for review of that fee if we think that our population has grown.
Correct.
By more than 3% or decreased by more than 3%.
Correct.
All right, any other questions from committee for Scott? All right, first, well, I guess, I asked if you guys have any discussion amongst ourselves? No? All right. Does anybody want to make a motion on number nine?
So.
Eric.
I do have a question for attorney. Is it because nine, 10, and 10B are intertwined and the presentation has covered all of them, is it appropriate to pass them in omnibus fashion or is there a reason not to?
Absolutely.
Well, I will move.
Appropriate.
It's appropriate. I will move passage of items nine, 10, and 10B in omnibus fashion to the council with a recommendation for approval.
Just for the record, that is resolution number 2018-10-049R, resolution number 2018-10-050R, and a resolution, a unnumbered resolution, but a resolution approving and authorizing the extension of an electric system franchise agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, moved by Mr. Jacobson, seconded by Mr. Ammons. Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, the, since we're going to be talking about how to do consent agendas, but the, the proper way, you can, you can send these three to council with a recommendation for approval en masse because this is a committee meeting. But for the unanimous consent portion at city council, you will need two motions. One, to group these three as a unanimous, as a, as a.
Omnibus.
Omnibus, and that'll take a, a, a motion.
And a pass.
And, and a vote to do so, unanimous vote to do so. And then, and then a roll call on the actual approval of those three items together. And that's how we can put it in the agenda for next week.
So should we, can we get, get away with it this time or?
Yeah, you can send it to council en masse because this is a committee meeting.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Those three will go forward to council with recommendation for approval. All right, our last ordinance of the evening, ordinance number 2018-10-072, an ordinance repealing Urbana City Code Section 15-68, a repeal of the aggressive solicitation ordinance. We do have one person that wishes to comment on it, but I'm going to let city attorney tell us about what's going on and then we will receive our comments.
Fairly recently, I received a letter from the ACLU and another organization, not the local ACU, but the Chicago chapter, raising serious question with our aggressive solicitation ordinance. They contend that it violates the First Amendment. They cited a number of cases in their letter, some of which I did not find overly dispositive, others of which I found directly on point. My further research into the issue, rather than just accepting the cases the ACLU cited, clearly indicate that courts are moving in the direction of striking down these ordinances. The, there is clearly an issue of speech. A solicitation for the immediate payment of money, sometimes called begging, sometimes called panhandling, there are other names, is clearly speech. And courts have found that that is protective speech. There is sometimes conduct that goes along with that type of activity, and that conduct by some courts has been found to be expressive speech, also protected by the First Amendment. If you carefully read the city's aggressive solicitation ordinance, UCC Section 15-68, you will likely conclude, or should conclude, that it is really the conduct, the aggressive nature of the conduct that's in question, not speech. Let me back up a little bit about speech. Bottom line with regulating speech in this context, kind of like signs, is if you have to listen to the speech to determine how to apply an ordinance or a statute, then that is considered content-based. The First Amendment requires very strict scrutiny of that kind of speech, and, and there's a whole delineation of the legal test that applies to that. But ultimately, it really comes down to a case-by-case basis. But the general concept is you, if you have to read the sign or listen to the speech to decide whether an ordinance or a statute applies, that becomes content-based, very hard to defend against. That's not to say that all speech where you have to listen to it or read it is automatically ipso facto a violation of the First Amendment. But courts vastly, in vast numbers, find that such speech is unconstitutional. If you look at other sections of our code, and I can enumerate some of them, you will find the kind of conduct that really this ordinance was directed to regulate is controlled by these other ordinances. Obviously, an assault, battery, disorderly conduct is not protected speech. Doesn't involve speech. Now, you might say, well, that's an expression. But, you know, boxing somebody in, preventing their movement frankly constitutes potentially false imprisonment. Threatening somebody aggressively about donating is an assault. Touching somebody or hotboxing somebody with several people can be a battery or can be mob action without the speech, unrelated to any kind of solicitation for the immediate payment of money. And therefore, well, let me back up and say one other thing. Having dealt with some constitutional cases in my life, a number of them, including some free speech cases, they are very, very expensive to defend. And if you lose a free speech constitutional case, depending on the nature of the case, the losing defendant, while the damages typically are very nominal to the nominal plaintiff, the losing defendant is required to pay not only their legal fees, which obviously they're required to do, but they're required to pay the plaintiff's winning legal. required to do, but they're required to pay the plaintiff's winning legal fees. And if we spend $100,000 to defend a case, you can expect that the other side is spending an equal amount. And there's a very good example in Springfield. Springfield had a case involving their aggressive solicitation ordinance in the downtown historic district, and they lost. And it went up and down the courts. It is now pending before the Seventh Circuit, I think a second time, maybe a third time, and the issue there is attorney's fees. The district court awarded them, the plaintiffs, about $334,000 in fees. And that is not what Springfield paid its attorneys, assuming it had an outside attorney, but you can assume that it was probably roughly the same. So, well over $600,000 in fees, it looks like Springfield incurred in fighting this issue. I don't think we have the money. I think we have other ordinances to control the physical conduct. With that said, at this point in time, I don't think the ACLU would have a viable plaintiff to bring a suit against Urbana, because PD, UPD has not been enforcing this ordinance in the last number of years. I forget what Chief Seraphin indicated, but it's been a few years. So I don't think there's a viable plaintiff, but still, if there's a constitutional violation, and I think this could be spun into one, and the cost, and the fact we are not enforcing the ordinance, I would recommend, strongly recommend, that you repeal the ordinance.
All right, thank you, Mr. Simon. Are there questions from the committee? Oh, well, I guess we'll let our one public input person come up and tell us.
Hello, I'm Carol Spindell. I live at 608 West Delaware Urbana. I'm the president of the Champaign County chapter of the American Civil Liberties Union, and we have over 2,000 member households in Champaign County, many of whom live in Urbana. So I'm pleased that you're considering, our chapter is pleased that you're considering repealing the aggressive solicitation ordinance. We feel that it is a First Amendment and free speech issue, and there are just, you know, four things that we would like to convey to you. First of all, we feel that the Supreme Court precedent is against the ordinance and that it would not survive a challenge. Second of all, Urbana has not enforced the ordinance, which suggests that it isn't really serving any useful purpose at this time. Third, as the city attorney made clear, current Urbana laws allow for protection against aggressive tactics such as unwanted touching or any kind of harassment. Obviously, people should be free to walk the sidewalks of our community without being harassed, but our laws already cover those concerns and those situations. And last of all, I think that we all see our community as being a little bit special, because we're the home of the public university. We welcome people here from across the state, from across the country, from across the world. We like to think of ourselves as a welcoming and inclusive community, us Urbannans. And so I, we feel that we should resist the notion of criminalizing others because they are poor or because they come from outside our community. So, thank you very much. Those are our concerns, and thank you for considering this repeal. We hope you vote to repeal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spindell. Committee, Mr. Jacobson?
I am a longtime member of the ACLU. I also vividly remember the circumstances and the activities under which this ordinance was constructed and passed. It was not an ordinance that was designed to meet some hypothetical problem. We had packed chambers here more than one night. We had people from the Philo Road area who told us, sometimes in person, sometimes in other communications, that they did not feel safe in the Philo Road Business District. We were responding to a deeply expressed need. The first version of the ordinance was frankly terrible, and we worked very hard, we worked very hard at constructing an ordinance that was designed to inhibit aggression but not speech. And it did serve a purpose initially. So I just really want the record to show that this ordinance was not constructed and not intended to inhibit anybody's speech. Now, we did have warning from council that we might be susceptible to a constitutional challenge. But the other issues seemed to us to be overwhelming. Now, the situation in the Philo Road Business District is very different now, and it's much, much better. I go down there several times a week to Planet Fitness, and while I'm there, I frequent, you know, local businesses there, because it's convenient, because I'm in the neighborhood anyway. And if we don't need this any longer, and if we do have alternative means, that's fine. But I just want to make very, very clear what the intention was, and frankly, how hard it was, because we had, we had people accusing us of wanting to demonize poverty on the one hand. On the other hand, we had people who said, "We're not safe. We can't go out of our homes at night into this commons area." So, sure, I'll, I'll, I'll vote for repealing it. It may not serve a purpose now, except to make us a target, and, and things have, have gotten better, and it's perhaps served its purpose. But I just wanted the record to be clear as to where this ordinance came from.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson. Ms. Wu?
So, Eric, I'm really happy that you brought that up, because I was trying to match up with the code exactly what some of the memo had talked about in terms of existing laws that we had on the books, and how these were covered. So I guess my question is to Eric, since you were here, what in the existing criminal code, and there might have been changes since then, did not address the concerns and the needs of the community at that time?
Well, you know, we were told by staff, we were told by the former mayor, that we needed this ordinance to meet these needs, that there were not existing ordinances. And I didn't comb through our entire body of ordinances to see if that was true, but that was, that was the advice that we were presented with at that time.
Mayor Marlin?
A little more context. This was my ward back then, and I was receiving a lot of those calls and concerns and emails. And the rationale for passing an aggressive solicitation ordinance was to make it a city ordinance violation with a ticket, with a warning and a ticket versus using a, one of the criminal code categories. And so, the, the point of it was to deter the behavior. The plan was to, first time a person was, you know, apprehended with aggressive solicitation, they would get a warning. The second time, it would be a ticket, but it would not be a criminal activity. So just to not criminalize the behavior, but just to stop the behavior. So that was the rationale behind making it a city ordinance violation. The legal landscape, unfortunately, or fortunate, you know, whatever, how you view it, has changed, so that more of these ordinances are being challenged these days. But, but the, that the intent of it was to give the police a tool to tell people just knock off this behavior, and basically a tool under the city ordinance. So that was the rationale.
So at the end of the day, I guess what we're, we're trying to help, not punish the people who are in poverty, but if we repeal this, it could potentially make them criminals. That's what I'm hearing you say, if they were found to be.
If you're charged under.
If you're charged as assault, battery, disturbing.
Yeah, if you're charged under some of those other things.
Right, right.
So, so that, that was, that was the rationale.
Okay.
But, but it's a different landscape today, legal landscape, and, and, you know, we still have tools, and there was a great deal of education of also the business owners and cooperation with the business owners in terms of posting no trespassing signs and that sort of thing. So there's, you know, there's, there's ways to address things.
Ms. Brown, did you have a comment?
Yeah, so disorderly conduct under UCC's section 1560, that's the Urbana City Code, right? And there's also the disorder, disorderly conduct under ILCS would be a state violation, that would be the criminal one, and this would be an ordinance violation, basically?
The ordinances that are listed, I guess it's the last page of my memo, dealing with assault, battery, disorderly conduct, reckless conduct, that kind of thing, those are ordinance violations. Typically, they, you know, somebody might receive an NTA or could be arrested, depending on the severity, you know? There are also state statutes that govern these same kinds of offenses. But the difference there is, if there is, with a state statute, there will be an arrest. They will be taken. I think that's, some of the, most of these ordinances, contrary to what a former mayor may have said, or what prior staff may have said, date back, our ordinances date back to 1975. So the means have always been there. It's obviously based on alderperson Jacobson's description of what was occurring, and Mayor Marlin's description, there were some pretty aggressive activity going on in an area, and this was responsive. Now, with that said, if there is, you know, very clear, unquestionable documentation in terms of why this ordinance came into being, and the city council is interested in rolling the dice on it, there are ordinances, though there have been a couple of cases that have struck down wording almost identical to this one. But the strict scrutiny, this test, you can meet it and have your ordinance upheld. But there would have to be studies, and you cannot apply an ordinance and consider an ordinance viable, basically as Mayor Marlin indicated with her comment about the landscape changing. You can't say, "Well, we had all these problems five years ago, and we adopted an ordinance to address it, and apparently the ordinance worked, but we apparently are not having these same problems now." What happened five years ago is not, at least one court is held, is not necessarily enough to perpetuate an ordinance which otherwise could constitute a First Amendment violation, speech, free speech violation. So, yes, you could. Now, if we had ongoing problems that were documented with not one or two instances, but 25, 30 police reports every few months as to aggressive solicitation, that might be a different story. But we don't have that. Those are facts that are not present.
Yeah, it's been 2014 since there's been.
By repealing this, would it affect a private business's ability to say, "No solicitation on our property"?
We get into trespass. A private business, a private business can control what goes on in their property. A private business is not considered a public forum for speech.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from the committee? If not, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to send the repeal of Urbana City Code, section 1569, to city council with a resolute, with a recommendation for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, that's a motion by Mr. Brown, a second by Mr. Ammons. Is there any other discussion amongst the committee? All right, if not, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? All right, the ayes have it. That will move forward to council with recommendation for approval. All right, we have, next item is a staff appointment.
Yes, typically, we do these at city council, so I will need a motion to send this to council, but we wanted to make this appointment announcement tonight. So I'm pleased to submit the appointment for Grants Management Division Manager, effective November 19th, 2018, for Ms. Sheila Dodd. Sheila Dodd has significant experience with affordable housing efforts in our community, in the nonprofit sector as Director of Habitat for Humanity, and with municipal government for over 25 years. While with Habitat, Sheila has led the growth of the organization, increasing the single-family home builds from one per year to six per year. She has managed successful grant applications, leveraging funds that have positively impacted affordable housing in our community. She also has extensive municipal experience with HUD grant processes, from application to implementation, environmental review, and all aspects of reporting, and I would add budgeting, and is a trained HUD NeighborWorks Housing Counselor. So I would welcome a motion to send her appointment to council with approval.
So someone wants to make that motion?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ammons, seconded by Mr. Jacobson. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? All right, that will move forward to council with recommendation for approval. All right, up we have two discussion items. First up is the city clerk, who is gonna talk to us about how to send a bunch of stuff all at once for voting.
Well, I was gonna, I was expecting our meeting to be much longer tonight, and was gonna offer to take this up later, but very quickly, this is a low priority item, something for you to review. I've included a memo with my own version of, of, of the consent agenda portion of our, of a, of a future style agenda, and, and then a page that I took out of the Municipal Clerks Institute training materials that addresses this. And you've given me a perfect segue tonight. Typically, communities, most communities around Illinois have a section of their agenda where they lump together boilerplate items that have unanimous agreement, you know, they're, they're just standard things. And you already do this in, in a sense. The town board bills for GA and, and, and the town board are, you know, there are, you know, 100 to 300 bills in there. You lump all of those into one consent procedure and vote those through. That is a sort of a consent agenda, where you put a whole series of things that you're just going to approve without anything more than general discussion, pretty much unanimous into one specific place. And so I've, I've suggested some ways to, to create that same kind of approach, where you would, for boilerplate items that, where there's unanimity, you'd put it in one place in your committee agenda report, or your committee report on the agenda, and in, in a second place, where you would put items that you want to, you know, have open discussion, just don't belong in, in a unanimous consent-type situation. So like I said, this is for discussion tonight only, take some feedback, and then we'll bring it up again in November to, to work out something, if you are interested in trying something.
All right, discussion amongst the, oh, Jim?
This concept of a consent agenda really grows out of the concept of an omnibus passage of matters, which you have done before and you do. It's interesting, the question was raised, can we combine the three that you considered? The omnibus provisions, our rules really don't deal with this one aspect of omnibus, but Robert's Rules of Order does not limit what can be grouped together in omnibus. They can be, you can have theoretically 50 totally unrelated items which can be moved forward in omnibus fashion. What Mr. Smythe has indicated in his memo is if there is an omnibus motion, which has, which does require unanimous approval, obviously the items that ultimately, the substantive part of the vote, the second vote, you have to apply the strictest rule, as Mr. Smythe has indicated. So if you have 50 items and just one of them requires a supermajority, let's say two-thirds to pass a budget, a routine budget amendment, then the vote, once you approve omnibus, unanimous, the vote can also. omnibus, unanimous, the vote, uh, can also, has to be by the two-thirds, even though forty-nine of the items don't require it.
All right, is there, Dennis?
Uh, I've got a question for Charlie, I guess. So it's called, uh, con, um, content.
Consent.
Consent agenda. Uh, does that mean that this becomes an agenda item?
Basically, yes, yeah. What the, the, what you have, and I can, I can, I should send you some samples of, of other communities' agendas and how they lay it out. But yeah, there's a portion in their general agenda where they have consent agenda items, where they group the items together with the idea that there'll be a, a motion to include those items in a unanimous vote in an omnibus fashion. So it takes two motions, a motion to omnibus, and then a motion to approve, and you would take your, you would take a roll call vote. Um, the.
And so that's created by staff, because they're the ones who, or the mayor, because they're the ones who are creating an agenda for the meeting.
Yes and no. Yes and no. Uh, it can be done by staff, or it can be done by you. And in my memo, uh, when you get a chance to look at it, I suggest that at council, or at committee meetings, when you see something that you think, as was done tonight.
Is applicable.
Is applicable, you can send it to the consent portion of the committee report, or you just send it to the regular portion of the committee report.
Yeah.
So just split, you know, as we go in. So tonight, you had three motions. If, say, they hadn't been discussed together, but they had been discussed at three different times in the meeting, you could say, "Item one, let's, let's send that to the consent agenda." Item five, when it comes up, "Oh, let's send that one to the consent agenda." And item seven, "Let's send that one." And so when the committee report at council meeting, subsequent council meeting comes up, the, the committee chair would say, "These are the, the items in the consent portion of the report."
Right.
Read them off and, and entertain a motion to approve the omnibus portion, and then, uh, or the mayor would entertain a motion to include that in, into, in an omnibus fashion. And then there would be a vote per the strictest requirements of the ordinances in that pack.
So it sounds like the council has to go through the same steps as it does already for an omnibus motion.
It would be faster that you would pre-pop, it would, yeah, yes, and, but you would pre-populate the omnibus vote.
Okay, so it's just, really what you're, like, advocating for is, uh, another option for an agenda, um, style, or agenda subtopic.
Right, it's splitting the, the committee report into two portions.
Right.
We, uh, Dennis, we do this on Library Report. Uh, there's always six to eight different sets of bills and payrolls that have to be approved, and they all come under a consent agenda, and we just, you make a motion to pass the consent agenda, and that's it, so you don't discuss each one of them individually if it's not necessary.
Yeah, and, and I could see that, uh, in smaller groups and in, um, committees or the township, that would make a lot of sense, because we already sort of do that already with the general fund kinds of things. But, uh, I, I, you know, it, it doesn't happen as often in the city council, but we have the option, if we pass this, that this could happen.
Sure. I saw you first, Mr. Jacobson.
Oh, so if I'm understanding this correctly, we could, for example, everything that we do in Committee of the Hall, everything we pass unanimously, we could add to the consent agenda.
Exactly.
And then, and then move that all at once.
All at once.
Rather than move each one separately, so.
But with the, with the consideration, as Bill has projected before, that we would need to read them all off and maybe give a brief entertainment of what each one is about prior to doing so. Just because I know Bill had mentioned before that if we just do that, and nobody knows what we're voting on, that might not be the best way to go about it. Mary Alice?
So, so that method makes me a little nervous. Um, and one of the things, when I was on Academic Center at the university, um, there's always a cassette, uh, agenda, but the first thing that happened with the consent agenda was a question to the members as to whether or not anything should be moved off of the consent agenda, um, before they voted on the consent agenda. And if they wanted it moved off, it would just automatically go down into the regular agenda, and that way, it, it's the reverse, right? Rather than saying, "Okay, well, let's approve everything," and then saying, "Wait, I wanna, I wanna remove this." It's, "Does anybody wanna remove this?" And then we approve it. I, I like that order of operations, I thought it was.
Charlie?
Yeah, yes, that is in effect what you would do, is, is, uh, the thing is, the law, the stat, statute requires that you read each item, and with sufficient description that people know what's occurring. Okay, so, so you could have a streamlined, maybe, the, the ordinance numbers could be streamlined a bit, but you still have to give the actual titles. But, and, and, uh, the requirement is that anything placed in, in, in the omnibus has an opportunity to be moved off to the regular portion. And so what I'm saying, the idea of pre-populating it is, is at committee, you would have, give a sense of what you want, what you think belongs in the consent agenda, so you have a way to think about it in advance. Okay, you won't just autom, it won't automatically appear in the consent agenda portion, you'll have sent it there to begin with, and then you always have an opportunity, if something comes up, to move it off of the consent portion and have it discussed and voted on separately. That always is part of an omnibus.
I, I guess my, what I'm suggesting, then, is just a little tweak to that, which is, you know, what, what you've, um, outlined for committee. Um, but then when you get to council and you read off all of them, is the first question is, should anything be moved off, rather than, "Do I have a motion to approve?" It's just another little step there.
Right, and that would be the role of the mayor to ask if anything, and then to entertain the motion to.
Right, exactly.
To omnibus it, yes.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Dennis?
So my concern is that sometimes people in the audience haven't tracked the Committee of the Hall meeting, but they come to the city council meeting because this is where a decision is made, and any item that they want to address in public comment at the time of, it becomes a less, more opaque, uh, you know, and I think that we should be looking for transparency. So it would be very much of a concern to me, what items we decide to stick into a consent agenda, because any time where there, for example, the city clerk got a request for public input from the audience, that should be taken out of the consent agenda and allowed to be addressed individually by people, because that's a transparent way of interacting with the public.
Mr. Jacobson?
I'm starting to feel that the potential pitfalls may outweigh the advantages. We, we can work through, uh, you know, items that we've passed unanimously, we often work through very fast. We read them again, motion, second, pass, boom. And, uh, but I think that the issue of, you know, transparency, the issue that, where there's a very, very strong bias not to revisit or hear from the public between the time the Committee of the Hall meets and the time that the full council meets, uh, there's a reason why we have Committee of the Hall and then the full council, because that, that, uh, one of the reasons, or several reasons, but one of the reasons is council has a chance to reflect, the public still has a chance to pay attention, uh, and I think that this, while it's certainly possible to pull something off of the consent agenda, it does really bias the process and buy, and give the appearance of biasing the process towards really greasing the skids. And, um, I think the more I think about it, the less inclined I am to, uh, to support creating a consent agenda.
Any other discussion? I was gonna ask her.
Oh, there is public comment, yes. Speaking of.
Dr. Underwood, did you, did you wanna make your comments?
I've got some additional information from, um, Mr. Smythe, uh, to the council, mayor and the council.
Could you speak into the microphone?
Oh. I'm sorry, um, the, uh, mayor and the council, I copied information when I saw, um, discussion of the consent agenda, and there were two pages, but when I came tonight, Mr. Smythe gave me some additional information that was not on the, uh, uh, the, um, site, and, which, uh, gave me some additional information. However, I just talked to a couple of people, uh, who were, um, on councils in, uh, other cities, and, uh, just because I had a question about openness, understanding by the public of the committee, of the whole meeting, uh, which is the purpose of understanding our city business as citizens. Additionally, I'm seeking to get more citizens to become involved, uh, I'm trying to, I don't have as much time, so I just made a few comments in writing, involved to come to council meeting and feel comfortable. Uh, transparency, uh, is, uh, disclosure, uh, public, um, relations, citizens, citizens' confidence, public engagement, uh, some of the things that I got from other people. Also, uh, what, uh, Mr. Smythe gave me, uh, in order to maintain good public relations and citizen confidence, it may be wise to strongly protect the right to discuss any item, and I'm just reading from what he said here, and I like that. Uh, so that's about all. Um, I'm trying to get people to come to the city council, and they need to understand what's going on, and if, if there's consent agendas and going into omnibus, people don't understand all of that. I was at, um, uh, the, um, uh, meeting the other night, uh, and, and they were saying about one city council meeting, they're having to have, uh, classes so citizens can understand what's going on at the city council meeting and at the committee as a whole, because they don't even understand. Some people are afraid to come to city council, but at least when you come to Urbana City Council meeting, you can kinda understand what's going on. But if you're doing all of this other stuff, people not gonna understand what's going on. Uh, the omnibus, they probably don't even know, they got to look that word up. Uh, but generally, uh, we have some understanding and some transparency, and I think those kinda things are important. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Underwood. Uh, Mr. Smythe?
Yeah, that, the second page, that, the materials that I handed out from the, the Municipal Clerks, uh, Training Material, you know, says best practice is to, to take anything off the consent agenda portion and put it into regular discussion, uh, any time there's someone from the public or from the council, uh, or new, new information has come forward. But like, you know, I haven't, I don't care which way you do this, uh, I, I just know that some people were looking for ways to, to, to streamline things. But, um, you, you, you've sent one tonight in a fashion very similar to what is proposed in my document here. You've found three items that are all similar, uh, all related, and, um, you know, and given the direction, will be reported together as three items that could be voted on in omnibus fashion, taking the appropriate two-step process, uh, at that, at that council meeting. So that will be a good example for you to look at, how it would work, and then, you know, what I'm suggesting, this is strictly, you know, it's not something for, to decide tonight, read through this materials, let me send you what other communities do, so that you can think about it, and see if there is a way that, you know, you'd wanna do it here. But as, as Eric has pointed out, he's both done the omnibus and then said, "Oh, well, that's why we do it individually." And yes, I have the same, I, I feel much the same way. There are things I wanna omnibus, and, you know, when I was on council, and there are things that just, let's just, let's go through these individually so we understand them. So, absolutely. Uh, but the, the law still requires that you individually list each of the items, and that you make them clear enough that the public can follow.
Mayor?
I, I would encourage people to at least think about it. When you, when you reflect on the kinds of things that you pass, there, a lot of times it's, it's, you're approving grants, you're approving contracts, you're approving things that are really pretty routine, that once you've discussed them in committee, there's really not much more to say about them at a council meeting. So that's, those are the kinds of things that you could easily put in a consent agenda, that I don't think you'd lose transparency and you would gain some efficiency. And as Charlie recommended, starting, just practicing, you know, if we wanted to practice, it would be with items that are approved unanimously, that require just a simple majority, not, not five of seven, or six of eight, or, or some of those, you know, special, special numbers, and things that really are, are pretty routine. When you think about it, there are a lot of those items on the agenda, so, so, but again, think about it.
All right, let's, uh, move on to our last discussion item of mayor and council priorities. Carol is gonna lead us.
Thank you. Um, I shared a memo with, uh, you all that I had sent to the mayor dated October eleventh, twenty eighteen, which I'm happy to make public with the clerks' help, we could maybe post it. Um, the purpose of the memo is, it's, it's part one of a two-part, what I think will be a two-part conversation with the council, um, around the mayor council priorities for twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-one. You made, uh, an important shift from past practice, um, with this, with this election cycle, if I can call it that, um, by shifting away from, um, a set of goals, which was really like a long task list, to where you, you actually came up with a finite number of, of priorities. There are, there are six with a few sub-priorities, um, thrown in, but, um, basically six, and, um, at, which suggests that you want focused attention on those priorities. We call them priorities for a reason, that means they will take precedence over other things, other activities. And so to really do that, given that, um, you know, staff time is fully subscribed and our budget is set, in order for us to make any kind, us as staff on your behalf, to make any kind of significant progress in advancing these priorities, it will necessitate a reallocation of resources. Each one will certainly require a reallocation of staff time, and some may require a reallocation of just the budget itself in order to provide additional resources for given activities, yet to be determined. What I wanted to talk to you about tonight is whether or not you are prepared to make those kinds of shifts, because it means that certain things that we do now, we will either not do, or they will be delayed relative to existing expectations, and before we take the staff time to even give you a set of options about, um, what, what activities we could undertake in order to make significant progress on some or all of these priorities, I wanna be sure that, um, there's an, an, a common understanding about what that's going to take, um, because I don't wanna, I don't wanna invest the staff time and then find out that, that there's, there's really not the appetite for making those kinds of shifts.
Questions for Carol. Bill?
I guess one thing that we discussed a little bit when we were setting priorities that, um, was always a little murky, was that, um, we wanted to do these things besides the normal functioning of government, or something like that. I forget exactly how they stated it. In addition to, um, the, the normal activities that we're, that we're doing. So it's hard for me to, um, sort of picture reallocating resources from those activities we think we're already doing, but those may not be the same for everybody.
Could I, could I parse that a little bit? Because the mayor and I had a conversation about this. Um, if, if you wanna hold every, this, this is why we're having this conversation. If you want to hold everything that you do as static, so that means just whatever the activities are, then that would suggest to me you're not prepared to make those shifts. But you could look at the things that you do now, all the activities you do now, as some are definite core activities that you would not want to touch, and there are others that are, maybe could be delayed, there are more to the nicety end of things as opposed to the necessity end of things, which would be the kinds of things that we would, um, with, you know, discussion at, at staff, with staff. that we would with, you know, discussion at staff, with staff, talk about, well, what might those things be that you would want to consider shifting? But an important part of what I want to communicate is unless we make such shifts and reallocations, we will not be able to make significant progress on the priorities, because they require that kind of, you know, focused attention and financial resources.
Mayor Alice?
So I will confess, I've only read this a couple of times, so I feel like I need to really digest. There's a lot of information you provided, thank you very much. I think I like the organization, talking about the outcomes, talking about what we're doing, talk about things that could potentially be done in order to achieve these goals. One thing that struck me as I looked at the outcomes was the phrase diverse community. And it struck me because two of our prioritizations are, I believe, number two and number three, increased minority participation in city procurement, et cetera. Priority number three was achieve equity in traffic stops and reduce the desperate impact of court fees and fines on lower income population. I don't feel like a diverse community encompasses all that is what we're trying to achieve. I feel like we're, and please, this is open for conversation, trying to achieve, ensuring that we have a welcoming community, ensuring that all people are treated as equitable as possible. And I feel like our priorities reflect that, and diverse is just a little too narrow. So my question would be, in terms of outcomes that we're looking at, should we include some of that language in order to make it a little more encompassing?
First, this was Carol Mitten's effort to capture, I think it's important to think in terms of outcomes as opposed to tasks or labels. And so this was, the outcome discussion is just my attempt to capture that. If you have additional things you'd like to weave into there, by all means, just, you know, I'm happy to, this can be a living, that part can be a living document.
Dennis?
Yeah, so. Okay, that comment somewhat answers, I guess, a concern that I had when you said that we would have to kind of decide between niceties and necessities.
Yes.
And there are many niceties which need to occur in this town to make it more viable economically, more of a tourist destination, more of, have more vibrancy and have a stronger city identity. And these things could well be considered small tasks. And I don't want to have those thrown out the window or put on the shelf for three years before we actually address some of those tasks. Now, they could be unfolded in, I think it was our first city council goal, which was to preserve and protect historic properties and the built environment of the community. But I mean, we have projects that have been proposed and actually drafted from previous years that have never been actualized. For example, the wayfinding signs for the downtown have never been made or put up. And there are other things that are similar, which I think would actually improve the quality of our downtown experience, especially for visitors, which I don't know, I mean, if we're going to be, I see them as not necessarily being listed as necessities, but as niceties. And I'm concerned about splitting, you know, or looking, imagining that we're going to split some of these things up, that we're not going to be able to do these things because we don't have any funding. But if we did them, they would help transform our city. And I think that we have to like really look at that more carefully.
If I, can I just respond to that? I think the wayfinding is a perfect example of what I'm talking about. So would that move the needle? It could move the needle. Why haven't we done it? Because we haven't prioritized the funding for that. So what I'm suggesting is, and the priority number one is actually with consideration of the downtown as a whole, initiate and plan for transformation of the Lincoln Square site into a destination. If in establishing a set of options for the council to consider, let's say we decided wayfinding is a way to move the needle on that, we would come to the council and we'd say, we think wayfinding is important to achieving priority number one. In order to fund it, which we haven't before, here's what we suggest you not do that is on, you know, that people expect us to spend the money on, so that it can actually happen. That's the kind of conversation we need to have if we're going to act on what the council has said are its priorities.
Can I respond? So I can see how that works. Does that mean then that us as city council members need to look at the budget and decide individually, like, and make proposals about what other things could be left aside, like something done in the Arbor Division, for example, to make this achieved?
What I'm suggesting is staff would come back to you with the set of options. If you found those options to be unacceptable and wanted to go hunting for your own, then, you know, that's certainly, that would be part of the conversation.
Another item that I think needs to be addressed is to finally complete the downtown design overview district, which would have then assisted the developer of 2,200 block of Vine Street with appropriate guidelines to build a building that could be acceptable to the community.
Other comments? Oh, I think, Carol, one of the other things that Dennis, that this, Carol's really asking in essence is, are we prepared at this time to give staff and allocate resources to even begin having this discussion? Because if I am gathering what your projection is, is that if we do not do this, then not much will be done in the next three years to move the status quo on those six items that we decided were our priorities.
That's correct. But I also, you know, if we come back and we say, okay, we want to, you know, do wayfinding just as an example, since we, you know, we'll just keep with that one. We say, we think that would be an important thing to do to advance priority number one. And here are several options for funding it. That is going to create some thrashing around because people are going to be upset that their thing, whatever it is, is not going to happen, or it's not going to happen on the schedule that they wanted. What I don't want to happen is that we go through all that angst and then no action is taken. That's, that would be a waste. That would be a waste for everyone. So I'm trying to gauge, you know, as I see it, which I tried to lay out in the memo, that in order to move the needle on these things, that we have to do these reallocations. And I need to know that we're doing this as a team effort and not that staff under my direction proposes this and then council won't take it on. That would not be useful for anyone.
Mr. Ammons?
So Carol, are you saying at this point that the six priorities that we have, that we discussed basically in addition to the day-to-day and everyday operations of the city, that the funding is not there to complete any of them? Or I just want you to speak directly to?
Sure. One of the things I tried to discuss in the memo with input from staff is what are we doing now with existing resources, with existing activities to advance each of the priorities? And so that's outlined there. But to my mind, in terms of really moving the needle, not working at the margin, but to really move the needle and make significant progress, which I think is what is intended when someone says this is a priority. And you've talked about it, about, you know, you're impatient for change in certain things. Well, that's what having a priority suggests.
I would say eager, but go ahead.
Okay, sorry. Eager for change, okay. That's good, too. The, but in order to do that, that means we have to say, you know, we're willing to not spend our money there and spend our money here, because that's what a priority means.
Okay, so look, I can appreciate that. I understand that everything that all of us may want is not going to happen all at once. Progress is good, though. So if, you know, Bill and Charlie are crazy about bike lanes and Dennis wants to preserve whatever can be preserved, I'm passionate about certain things. If I can agree that there may be some people who are upset that they don't get what they want in a timely manner, so to speak. So I thought it was a compromise of sorts to look for incremental change. But I do agree that, you know, if you prioritize something and you can really move the needle on it pretty significantly, then I can see something like that. I'm unclear as to how spending more money on equity in traffic stops would bring about equity in traffic stops.
I tried to talk in each one, in each, for each of the priorities, about how I think an investment would move the needle. So I'll just read the part about, there's two pieces to priority number three. One has to do with equity in traffic stops, and the other has to do with the undue burden on low-income people of court fees and fines. So as every, this is what I had written, as everyone knows, there's an ongoing effort to collect and analyze information and refine police practice related to the racial disparities in traffic stops. However, there is additional study, education, and outreach necessary to understand the equity piece of the traffic stop picture for Urbana. The fact that individual communities with all their unique features, ours being one of them, are caught up in a national narrative on this subject means that additional resources will likely be needed to further explore this topic beyond merely traffic stop data. Further, we need to develop a realistic sense of causation, whether it's police officer behavior versus longstanding socioeconomic issues. We don't have a full understanding of what is causing our racial disparities. So in order to achieve equity, we have to understand causation. I thought it was interesting tonight, the fellow who was here and talked about, what's that? Oh, yeah, the guy who talked about restorative justice. One thing that he said that in describing the process model was that everyone has a voice, everyone's needs matter, and that we commit to addressing not only individual issues but systemic problems. That was totally on point. So that's why we need to make more of an investment. If, to my mind, if you really want to move the needle. If you want incremental change, we're getting incremental change. And you can, and we can continue that way. But I think we, as, you know, as someone who is supposed to execute on your priorities, you need to understand how I think this lays out. And if we just keep on the way we are, that's going to mean incremental progress to varying degrees. If you want real change, then we have to reallocate resources.
Okay, thank you.
So one of the things this discussion has made me think is that maybe, and cancel, I'm also talking to everyone here, is that compartmentalizing our six priorities in consideration rather than putting the whole, putting the whole boat up for sale at once, maybe let's say, all right, well, let's do this, but let's go, you know, one priority and let's do it, you know, once every other committee of the whole meeting. Bring, you know, consider priority number one first. And let's allocate staff resources to addressing that particular issue. First, let's talk about it, let's see how we feel about what our options are, what staff best feels like our options are, if we like them, if we don't like them, if they're just so outrageous that we're like, let's move on to priority number two and see where we can go from there, rather than going after all six at once.
So are you suggesting that you would want us to approach this in a linear fashion, which is, okay, we only involve staff that relates to priority number one, we develop a set of options, and we bring those to council, and you have a discussion around that, and you either have the appetite to make those shifts in resources or you don't, and then and only then do we go and convene the staff group that will then work on priority number two?
Correct. That's what I'm suggesting. Mayor Alice?
Excuse me. Two things. The first one is, is that I'm not sure if we should go priority one, priority two, priority three. And the reason why is because you're going to have overlapping staff, right? Maybe planning commissions involved in the first three. And then the, you know, excuse me, the police department is involved in the next two. You want to be able to regulate. I'm going to need some water here. You're going to want to be able to stagger, I guess is what I'm saying. So we might not want to go in a linear fashion. I don't disagree with the idea of just kind of chunking this up, breaking it down. I think it's a good idea. Of course, then we'll have probably a conversation in terms of what to start with first. Thank you very much. The, well, I'll leave that there, because that's basically, I just wanted to be cognizant of the fact that there are overlapping priorities here with staff members that might require more time from certain departments.
Very true.
Erin?
So it would be, I guess, somewhat helpful to try to understand, as the city administrator, how you're delegating the responsibilities to the staff members. How do you allocate or to offer, to suggest how much time is spent on any particular thing? Because what you seem to be raising ever since you came on board was how much time staff will spend on any particular priority or whatever the project may be or the issue may be. And I'm just curious as to, is there a formula, a model in which you say, okay, this is going to require that staff member X spends two hours or three hours on this particular subject?
We don't have work plans that are refined to that degree. I mean, that would, that's an ideal where every staff member has a work plan for the year and everybody knows exactly what everyone's time is allocated to, not down to the minute, but, you know, in chunks. We don't, we don't have that. But my operating assumption, because I don't have the, I don't have, you know, granular data, is that everyone's time is fully subscribed with all those ongoing activities. Now, do we pull them into meetings that are not for those? Of course we do, because there's some slack in it. But to take on these priorities in a significant way is definitely beyond their ability to do the work on the priority as well as continue in delivering on all those routine expectations at the same pace.
Okay.
Any other discussion amongst the committee? Any other thoughts for Carol as we move forward with this idea? Bill?
I guess, just to the point of prioritizing the priorities, I think a lot of it is going to be dependent on opportunities and timing issues and what staff we have available, what staff we have expertise in. So I think we'd be looking to staff to recommend an order to that.
I'd be happy to. I could do it right now, but I'll be more thoughtful about it.
Pretend like you thought about it, yeah. I did have, maybe it's too specific, but I saw several references to opportunity zone application. I don't know if we've talked about that before. Can we, can you explain what that is?
I'm not prepared to explain that.
Okay.
But I will, but I will get you an explanation.
Okay. It has something to do with reinvestment of capital gains or something? That's all I know.
Yeah.
Mr. Ammons?
Yeah, so I have somewhat of a concern about, I mean, because I know that the staff is working diligently, they're doing everything that they possibly can, and I know what it feels like to be stretched too thin and not to be able to give you all to something. So I don't want to put the staff in a situation like that. But I'm concerned when you say that the staff will prioritize our priorities.
No, we're going to come back and suggest to you an order of prioritization of your priorities. We will suggest, recommend, you will decide.
So you will suggest the priorities of our priorities based upon our prior, setting of our priorities? No, I understand what we're trying to get to somewhere where I think, I don't know if it's possible maybe that we said, okay, if it's possible, maybe, that we said, okay, here's priority number one, we give it our all for two months or three months, and guess what? We realized it, let's move on to number two. I think for myself, I have, I have two issues. One is that I can be patient when I see it moving and I see my turn coming, right? And I see that what sort of effort is being put into that. The vast majority of the people that I represent are very much speaking to what Brother Lebansky spoke about earlier, is that that voice has been unheard for so long, so being last in line is not going to work, right? So I need to make sure, and I do, I can appreciate that, for instance, priority number two has become a focal point of many conversations around minority participation goals and things like that. And so, if I can see that type of movement in these particular directions, then I understand that we have more than one issue that we have to deal with, and the city still has to function and run. But I think for any council member, we want those issues that either we have brought to the table, or our constituents are advocating for, that we see something happening in relationship to that. So, you know, I'm open for the discussion, and I'm looking forward to seeing how staff prioritizes our priorities, of course.
Suggests?
Suggest.
Right, just a suggestion.
Mayor Marlin?
You're right, Aaron, that we are making progress on a bunch of the, actually, the items listed right here, and we will continue. So progress is being made. But an example of an opportunity that popped up kind of after these priorities were set was the opportunity to get the grant to study, to do the feasibility of the Kickapoo Rail Trail. That came after we actually had these priorities set, but it was one that we absolutely couldn't pass up. So that's an example of jumping on an opportunity for this particular priority. And that's going to happen as we go forward, and I, and we'll continue to take advantage of those opportunities. So it's not necessarily all linear, but it's a part of the puzzle.
It would seem to me that as council members, we could, we could still be working on issues of our interests which don't have staff support currently, but we could be working and promoting concepts or projects which we as individuals, as council members, or as our constituents, are expressed interest in. And we don't always have to have staff assistance to achieve some of our goals.
All right, any other thoughts from the committee? It sounds like we've given you some direction.
Yes.
All right, last chances. All right, seeing no...
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Seeing no further business before the committee, I will adjourn this meeting. Thanks, everyone.